Item number one, could we have George Kiefer and Erwin Simarowski to come forward? Mr. Deaton, Mr. Comrie. This is a public hearing item, so we're going to have -- could we have some -- Sergeant, can you clear some of these people out, there's just too many people behind the horseshoe? We're going to have the public hearing. Julian Bromley. Julian Bromley. Yeah, go ahead, pull it up.
Julian Bromley, Los Angeles resident. I'm here again to urge your support of the Unified Draft Charter. Though I've only just got hold of a clean copy of the version, and I just perused the Red Line version from yesterday, I still put, I guess, unlike some people, I have confidence in the two chairs that whatever is absolutely before you by next Friday, that you -- I understand that you will adopt, you will adopt, so I urge your support this time. Thank you.
It may be sooner than next Friday. Okay, Sandra Kayden.
I'm representing the League of Women Voters, but more importantly, the Civic Coalition. And I'm going to very quickly read the members of the Coalition, and then say that -- well, I'll say it now, that this charter represents not only a commitment and compromise on all our parts, in terms, particularly the commissions, but also the civic community. And every other community in the city, I think. The African-American Jewish Leadership Connection, the American Jewish Congress, the Asian Pacific Planning Policy Council, CARASSON, the California Association of Nonprofits, Church of Christian Fellowship, Charla, CARASSON, California Association of Nonprofit Housing, California Association of Addiction Recovery, Constitutional Rights Foundation, Chinatown Service Center, California Association of Addiction Recovery, FASTG, the Filipino Association of Government -- of Group Incorporated, First AME, Korean Youth and Community Center, IAM Foundation, Los Angeles Nonprofit Policy Council, the League of Women Voters, Latin America Civic Association, the LA NAACP, the Little Tokyo Service Center, the Muslim Public Affairs Council, Naleo, the National Association of Elected -- Latino Elected Officials, the Search for Involvement of Filipino-Americans, Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing, the Southern California Associate Board of Rabbis, Sober Living Network, the Tarzana Treatment Center, the Urban League of Los Angeles, and Water and Power Associates. And again, I want to thank all of you. I know that this has been a long and difficult process. I think the Council should have been involved earlier, but this is -- government is not a comp -- is a compact between people, and I firmly believe that this is something that we can all work with, and a major step forward for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I were still a member of this Council, I would enthusiastically support this unified report. Never in the history of the city has there been so much outreach to the public, so much thorough research on the background, so many opportunities to consider the variety of possible alternatives, so much experience in comparing what's occurring in other places of the city. So we so much accumulated knowledge and experience in which to make a thoughtful conclusion. The remaining issues are really very, very tiny compared to the very significant constructive changes that are included in this unified report. I urge you to adopt it.
All right. Marilyn Stout, followed by Anita Zussman. Ms. Stout, are you here? All right? You have three minutes.
Where am I supposed to speak from? Right here or there?
No, right here in front, ma'am, right there.
Right.
Thank you.
Three minutes, okay.
You've got it.
I am appearing today on behalf of homeowners, residents, property owners associations in the City of Los Angeles. I came this morning to present a 19-page readable, understandable charter. And the title of it is Suggested New Charter for the City of Los Angeles. I would like to have you have the opportunity to put this charter not only on the ballot for the people to read, but I would like you to have the opportunity to box the ears of the commissions for coming up with a charter that is maybe 300 pages long. It's important for you to put on the ballot something that people can read and understand and vote on. And I suggest that if the unified charter is 300 pages long, it is too long for people to read, understand, and vote on. I could go on, I have -- I would like to say that we based our charter on the American Constitution, on the existing city charter, and it's been investigated and discussed in the property owners associations. Thank you. I would like more opportunity to talk again sometime.
All right. Thank you. Anita Zussman. Oh, absolutely. Maybe, Ms. Stout, if you could, if you have a copy for the members, we'll be more than glad to distribute it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Anita Zussman, representing the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, here to support the unified charter today. What a surprise. As you know, many people have worked long and hard to produce a document that you're going to consider today. The two charter reform commissions, members of the public, many different individuals and organizations, and the city council itself has put in a lot of time and a lot of money to produce a document that nobody is happy with.
Excuse me, Ms. Zussman.
Yes.
Just a minute. If we could, for those people that have a need to be talking, maybe you could just take it outside, it's very rude for the people that are interested in getting their point across to the members of the city council. Thank you.
Perhaps the true measure of the document that you're considering today is the fact that nobody is entirely pleased with it, but that many, many people are willing to support it. We think that you're going to consider a document today that is effective logistically and even more supportable politically. We urge you to support the unified document.
Okay. Anybody else want to be heard on this item? All right. Public comment period is closed. How do you want to do it? Do you want -- who wants to start? Oh, excuse me, there's one other. Yadi Hashimi? Hashimi?
That's correct, and I thank you.
Can we start by asking Mr. Deaton?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to bring my copy of the charter. Looked at it again last night, and certainly is a boring document. When you read it, you realize that there was a tight connection between mediocrity and compromise. It's therefore easier to talk about what's not in this new charter than what's in it. But nevertheless, I'm going to urge you to support it and put it before the voters for three fundamental reasons. Number one, it does preserve the major progressive elements that are the pillars of the Los Angeles City Charter, what 100 years ago people discussed at various community meetings and finally were able to adopt and finalize in the year 1924. It does preserve the civil service system. It does maintain public ownership over municipal utilities, even though it weakens that by giving the mayor the power to get rid of DWP Commission, just as an example. It does maintain direct democracy recall. We don't make it any easier, it's going to be as difficult as it has ever been to recall someone. But for the main, it preserves those progressive elements. Another fundamental reason is I feel like it's like you're trying to move a very heavy object, and that very first move is difficult. I think that this would allow us to accomplish that. Then again, one, you know, it would be a lie to tell the public that this is the greatest thing that has happened to the people of this city. The missing elements are just, there are too many. The Bill of Rights is missing from it. Diversity, which if you recall, was the main reason why our mayor was pushing to place this charter reform on the ballot. Diversity is missing as an element, as a value element, in the charter, whether it has to do with the employment provisions or in the governance volume. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Stout, I'm sorry.
I have copies.
Okay. Could you get, give them to the officer, please? Thank you so much.
And there is a Bill of Rights.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to start, we'll start with Mr. Comrie, Mr. Deaton, and then the representatives of both of the commissions. Is that okay? All right.
Mr. President.
Yes. Can we give a mic to Mr. Comrie?
Mr. President, members of council, we have three documents that will be distributed or have been distributed to you. I'll start first with a list of questions council members asked in the last meeting. The answers in this document have been updated to the February 26 draft from the prior draft, so it should be totally up to date with what's before you. There was a question on how the members of the community neighborhood councils are selected. There'll be a system set up by ordinance, but the charter actually provides all members of the community must be able to participate, including businesses, residents, religious organizations, community groups. They participate and they decide on their own how their executive board is selected. All members who do participate can vote, and whether it's a town hall meeting or it's by ballot, their leadership will be selected by their rules. Would the mayor approve the second question, the system for neighborhood council selection answer is no. Can someone serve on a neighborhood council who's also on a city commission? There's no prohibition in the charter on that. Would the council continue to have easy access for the new CIO's office? It's entitled now Office of Administrative Services and Research. We believe by the latest wording that is true, it will have the same access in the mayor as it does today. What is the difference between the new administrative office and the Office of Finance? The Office of Finance is the city clerk's current revenue collection. There are no duties transferred from the city administrative office to it. It is merely, as I indicated, the existing revenue collection portion of the city clerk's office. Can you clarify the role of the Office of Finance regarding economic development? There's nothing in the unified charter that addresses that. Are there provisions ensuring that the revenue collection function will be made public? No, and there are no provisions now in the current charter. Basically, most of, many of the city clerk's records, like business taxes, are confidential and detailed, but are public in totals. Will the executive directives made public, be made public, and does the Brown Act apply? This is a slight change from the prior draft, or significant change, I should say, based on questions. The executive directors will be filed with the city clerk, published in the same manner as ordinances, and they will take 15, take effect 15 days after publication. The Brown Act does not apply.
All right.
Can the council set parameters on the issue of executive directors through ordinance? Our reading says it cannot. Is the mayor prevented from approving multiple contracts for an amount less than the amount set by ordinance? The charter does not address that. However, the council may address it by ordinance and may provide necessary rules. Is the required information about transfers that the mayor can make under this, should they be made public? Yes. They've inserted new rules since the last draft that requires whenever the mayor makes such a transfer, the city clerk be notified, the president of the council, the controller, and the director of administrative services, and the interdepartmental transfer is the same way, so they are public. Under Charter Sections 370, who signs contracts? It's whoever the council authorizes. What contracts does the mayor approve? Any that involve his personal office, and any others the council authorizes. Under 370, what contracts do employees enter into? Any that they are authorized by the city council and the mayor in the normal process where it's delegated to them. This is the same language that exists in the current charter. Is there a conflict between the council's responsibility in establishing legislative positions and the mayor's responsibility in representing the city on those issues? We do not believe so. We believe also, there's a secondary question, can the council speak out? We believe the council can continue to speak out as individuals or as a body on the policies adopted by the council, that follow the new process of the council adopting and the mayor having the opportunity to veto. Is there a conflict between a full-time board and a full-time general manager in public works? However, we believe that can be worked out, and if future amendments are necessary, it could resolve there any conflicting problems. How does the full-time commission on the Board of Public Works compare to other part-time? This is the same provision that exists in the current charter, so there's no change. Does a legislative veto process replacing the current Prop. 5 have a greater potential for creating gridlock? Possibly yes. In that you will have a veto process, it has to be referred back to the commission involved. It cannot be settled at that point by the city council.
It's, so that's the difference?
Yes. Can we distinguish between litigation involving monetary and non-monetary issues? This deals with litigation. We think it will be difficult because most involve both. Can we easily identify litigation over which the mayor and council have control? We don't think it will be easy. However, the city attorney is authorized to make the final determination, and we think that will be worked out in the process. Can the council set monetary threshold for the mayor, for his authority? Yes. Does any single authority have control over litigation? No. It is clearly divided between the mayor and council and city attorney and independent boards. Are there any new checks and balances over the information on lawsuits? No. It follows the current process that's now in the charter. How will the amendment process work for expanding the number of council seats? Basically, we will have the unified charter with 15 members before the people. If that passes, the citizens will have two options, one to expand it to 21, and one to expand it to 25. If either, either or both of those pass with a majority vote, the one with the most votes will then take place. How will the area served by the area planning councils be defined? By council ordinance. Haven't 60 to 70 positions been added to the current 150 exemptions? Yes, that's the two assistant general managers plus more positions in harbor and airports for a total of about 220. And DWP is rate-setting by the board? Yes, but it continues to be subject to mayor and council approval by ordinance. Can the board determine surplus water sales? Yes, again, though, subject to mayor and council by ordinance. Redistricting. Who appoints the reapportionment group? One by each council member for 15, two by the city council president, three by the mayor, one by the city attorney, and one by the controller. What accountability is there for neighborhood councils? There's a fair amount of detail in the unified charter about that, and they will have to establish rules on themselves. The next report is a cost analysis. There's both a detailed sheet and a summary. Basically, there will be a startup cost of six to seven million. That involves about $2 million to print and mail the new charter. Also, immediately, the Office of Neighborhood Empowerment would be set up with field offices. The redistricting commission would be a $500,000 cost every decade. The city attorney will need about $400,000 to hire staff to write all of the new ordinances. And the one-time election in 2003 of citywide of all council districts versus half will generate an additional cost. The second part of costs will be an ongoing cost. Yes, there will be. It will, it primarily involves the representation issue of neighborhood empowerment councils, additional council people if approved by the citizens, and very specifically, the Office of Neighborhood Empowerment, we estimate, will cost about three to five million a year. The new Department of Finance will be about $200,000. Depending, and it will be subject to council ordinance, how the new council offices, if they're approved, are established, it will be a cost of anywhere from 800,000 to 13 million, meaning if the existing council budgets left in place for staff, but just, we just create the new council members, it will be the smaller number. But if the new council districts average about 1.3 million each, it would be the higher total if full 10 new members are created. Five area planning commissions, 250,000. The controller's performance audit responsibility, 400,000. And the new director of public works, 200,000. Once again, there will be one-time costs of six to seven million. Ongoing costs, four to 19 million, depending how the council and the mayor implement it. And again, most of those costs are attributed, first, to the election itself, and then, second, to the greater community participation. I'll now let Ron start with another chart we have of every element of the charter.
Mr. President, you have a chart categorized, unified versus current charter, and you had instructed us to come back and give you the most significant items.
Mr. President, are we going to go through this? Is this the document that you're going to be?
Yes.
Could we go, you're going to go through it?
Every one of them.
Thank you.
Just for you, Mr. Alatorre. And what I would suggest is that we go item by item, and if there's any comments, that we discuss them at that point in time, and then move on to the next item. Accordingly, item one is the, under the current charter, the council is named as the governing body of the city. That designation has been eliminated under the unified charter. In the unified, in the current charter, the Department of Animal Regulation and Building and Safety are both named as departments. Those have been deleted from the unified charter. Those would be handled in the administrative code. And in the current charter, redistricting.
Sergeant, can we have some quiet in the council chamber, please? If you want to do any talking there, please leave the council. Go ahead, Mr. Deaton.
Currently, the existing charter provides for redistricting to be done by the council in, at the discretion of the council. What is being suggested, what is being included in the unified charter is the establishment of a redistricting commission. The commission members would be one member each selected by council members. President of the council would appoint two, the mayor three, one by the city attorney and one by the controller. It would be an advisory commission, and the commission would appoint a director and staff.
Could I just ask a question on that?
Discussion on this.
Is that all right?
If you want to be heard on this show, on this particular item.
Could I?
All I was to do is, we should, we should, we should.
Okay, Mr. Alatorre.
Correct me if I'm mistaken. What will happen is that the process will appoint this commission, and I would imagine it's going to have staff.
And a director.
And a director. Is this, like, forever? I mean, in other words, is this like, not just during the period of time that it operates? Or how does, how do you envision?
I would envision it being the time proceeding, once the census information is available, they would be in the staff.
And then it self-destructs after the, after redistricting is done? So we hire a director for whatever period of time, probably 1990, or they're, just say, the year 2000, and then it works until redistricting. We appoint a staff, all right? Then they will, then deliver their work product to us, all right? And we will have to have a staff also to do the same thing. Is that what it is?
I believe so.
Okay. So we're going to have two staffs that are going to be doing redistricting. And then, after they submit theirs, then we listen to it and, and the like. All right. So then we, after we listen to it, no, I just want to, I'm trying to understand it.
Yes.
After we listen to it, and it's presented to us, then we ultimately have to, we make the decision on redistricting with the input, hopefully, of this august body. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So whatever amount of money that we spend on redistricting now, we just double it. Is that the way it works? All right. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Walters?
A point of order. Are we going to, if we have questions, as Mr. Comrie and Mr. Deaton go through this, should we stop them at the point they have, we have questions to ask one?
Yes.
That's what they said earlier.
Or wait until they finish?
No. I think that we should do it, my suggestion was that at each item, we do it, and if there's any discussion on that item, to have the discussion and then move on to the next item. That way we can.
Okay. Well, I had several questions noted to ask Mr. Comrie about.
Oh, then I think we should go back and finish those before we get to the chart, then. If it's on the costs and/or the questions.
Yes, it's on these things. Mr. President, may I be recognized for that asking question? Okay, thank you. Mr. Comrie, in the public work section of your responses, the question came about the conflict between a full-time board and a full-time general manager appointed by the mayor. I had the opportunity to have a conversation.
Ms., we haven't gotten to the public works yet.
You know.
This is in Mr. Comrie's report.
Questions. But you, Councilwoman, maybe it'd be better if we went, because that will be covered in the chart, so when you get to that item on the chart.
Okay.
Because we have all the relevant sections, and that might.
You want me to wait until then? Fine.
I think so. I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Mr. Savornic, did you have something you say on a particular issue here? Or the overall issue?
Overall, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it later. Okay, Mr. Deaton, proceed.
In, on the second page, relative to changes in the mayor's power relative to removing general managers and commissioners. Currently, general managers are hired with the mayor hiring and the council confirming that will remain. The, the same process is used for commissioners. Also, on the removal of general managers or discipline actions relative to general managers, the mayor and the council most, most, must both agree and approve. Also, in the case of the annual evaluation for general managers, that's approved by both the mayor and the council via a merit pay ordinance and the ordinance for salaries. Unified charter provides for that the mayor can fire all general managers except the chief of police, the executive officer, and the executive director of Employee Relations Board, CERS, and general managers, et cetera. If, however, if the mayor does fire one of those general managers, the general manager has seven calendar days in which to appeal that to the, to the council, and the council has 10 meeting days in order to override the mayor's proposed firing by a two-thirds vote. As it relates to commissioners, the mayor will appoint, and the council will approve the appointment. However, the mayor can unilaterally fire all commissioners except ethics and police.
Can we, can we use the term remove rather than fire?
Certainly.
Okay.
I don't know that they would notice the difference, but if it makes you feel better, I'll use remove. The, those sections relative to the police commission and the ethics commission, which are the exceptions, are included in the chart, which roughly, in the case of, of the police commission, is still the existing appeal process to the council, and the ethics commission a two-thirds of council, a council requirement of a two-thirds vote, and it has to be for cause. In 231 point, 231H, currently, the, as the governing body, the council is in charge of intergovernmental relations. This would be switched to the mayor's office. The mayor would then represent the city on intergovernmental relations issues in accordance with city policy. On page 22, basic outlines the process for establishment of council, of city policy on legislation, and that would be that the mayor and/or the council would propose, and if the, actually, it would require mayor and council approval, and if the council disapproved or disagreed with the mayor, then it would take a two-thirds override. The council would remain able to represent itself and individual elected officials as, as elected officials could represent themselves in Sacramento, Washington, independently of the city, but it would be their individual position. Page three. Page three. Currently, there is no provision for emergency response and preparedness activities in the charter. It's handled by the administrative code, and that provision has been included now into the charter under section two thirty-one I. Two thirty-one J basically codifies the mayor's authority to issue executive directives. The, when the mayor can, under the new charter, can have executive directives. They are binding on departments, commissions, appointed officials, and employees of the city. However, they are limited to the management and supervision, administration of government that are entrusted to the mayor in, in the charter. There is a requirement that the, they be published, and that was handled by Keith in his discussion, and that they have, they don't take effect until fifteen days afterwards.
There is a executive budget division created in the mayor's office. This, from what we've reviewed, this merely formalizes what all mayors have done. They've always had a staff designated as budget. They've had anywhere from two to ten people work on it. It doesn't change any other provisions in the new administrative office of research. It can assist the mayor as in the past, and it can also assist the council. Item two thirty-three reassigned power to separate transfer employees. There's a provision in the charter now for, it's rarely used, but there's occasionally transfer employees temporarily. It removes it from the CIO and puts it in the mayor's office. However, it puts controls in there where the mayor needs to notify the city clerk, and the city clerk notifies the president of council, the director of administration, and the board of civil service commissioners, and follows a similar process as today, but assigns that to the mayor. Temporary succession of the mayor, the council president as today acts pending. I don't see a major change there. Two forty-three B changes rules, temporary succession of the council president, says the council president pro tem acts as a president in case of the unavailability. I believe that's basically what you do now, but you would-
But it's absent from the state, not just the city.
Yes, I think that's an absence from the state. Section two forty-five.
This is Prop five, and currently, the council can assert jurisdiction by a two-thirds vote, and within twenty-one working days, within five day, meeting days of the action by a commission, all commissions of the city. And by a majority vote within twenty-one days, can act as that commission, and change the action of the commission, and it in fact legally becomes whatever commission it's asserted jurisdiction over. What is being proposed in charter section two forty, the unified charter section two forty-four, two forty-five, is that with a two-thirds vote, the council can assert jurisdiction, but only for the purposes of voting the item up or down. And it takes a two-thirds vote to, to vote it up or down as opposed to the majority vote in the current charter. And the following, as you can see on page six, actions of the ethics commission, the pension commission, the employee retirement system, the water and power employee retirement system, and some of the quasite personnel decisions of the board of civil service commissions, employee relations issues, board of police commissioners, personnel decisions, et cetera, would be exempt from this, which they currently are not.
Yeah, I think, I think we have some people who want to be heard on this. Mr. Alatorre?
Just so I, I'm trying to understand this. Now, so in other words, in, to a certain extent, you maintain Prop five for the purposes of voting, of agreeing with the decision or disagreeing with the decision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Let's just say hypothetically, we disagree with the decision. Then what?
What you would do is with a two-thirds vote, say no.
We disagree. All right, then what?
The item would go back to the commission.
Okay, and then?
They get to try again.
All right, and let's just say that they-
Do it again.
They do it again.
And if the council with a two-thirds vote, and a two-thirds vote to turn and disagree, it goes back.
At what point do we try and seek resolution?
As we stated in our questions and answer document, this does prevent, this does provide the opportunity for stalemate.
So this could go on indefinitely with no resolution? I mean, is that what it is? I mean, this-
Well, either the commission would get the idea that it wasn't ever going to be approved, or the council get tired. I'm not sure which, which would happen first.
Well, this is, this makes no sense.
Maybe they get the word. Go ahead, Mr. Savornich.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This has been one of the sticking points that I have seen through this whole debate in regards to this legislative game of ping pong that we could carry on in some future endeavor in regards to an issue that may be, may have very serious consequences to the city of Los Angeles. And what bothers me more than anything else is that with the current provision before us, yes, it could be a stalemate, yes, there could be no solution. And we know very well that most of the time, when an issue comes before this council, that is, and, and a lot of times, in the terminology, it's either a friendly or an unfriendly Prop five, is that if it was a Prop five where the city council had to assert jurisdiction over one of the commission actions, we have done it very sparingly. We've done it with the greatest amount of debate that we've been able to do, and even now, the way things are right now, we have to take two actions, which I think has been overlooked in this entire reform package. One, we have to vote to assert jurisdiction.
The council would remain able to represent itself and individual elected officials as, as elected officials could represent themselves in Sacramento, Washington, independently of the city, but it would be their individual position. Page three. Currently, there is no provision for emergency response and preparedness activities in the charter. It's handled by the administrative code, and that provision has been included now into the charter under section two thirty-one I. Two thirty-one J basically codifies the mayor's authority to issue executive directives. The, when the mayor can, under the new charter, can have executive directives. They are binding on departments, commissions, appointed officials, and employees of the city. However, they are limited to the management and supervision, administration of government that are entrusted to the mayor in, in the charter. There is a requirement that the, they be published, and that was handled by Keith in his discussion, and that they have, they don't take effect until fifteen days afterwards.
There is a executive budget division created in the mayor's office. This, from what we've reviewed, this merely formalizes what all mayors have done. They've always had a staff designated as budget. They've had anywhere from two to ten people work on it. It doesn't change any other provisions in the new administrative office of research. It can assist the mayor as in the past, and it can also assist the council. Item two thirty-three reassigned power to separate transfer employees. There's a provision in the charter now for, it's rarely used, but there's occasionally transfer employees temporarily. It removes it from the CIO and puts it in the mayor's office. However, it puts controls in there where the mayor needs to notify the city clerk, and the city clerk notifies the president of council, the director of administration, and the board of civil service commissioners, and follows a similar process as today, but assigns that to the mayor. Temporary succession of the mayor, the council president as today acts pending. I don't see a major change there. Two forty-three B changes rules, temporary succession of the council president, says the council president pro tem acts as a president in case of the unavailability. I believe that's basically what you do now, but you would-
But it's absent from the state, not just the city.
Yes, I think that's an absence from the state. Section two forty-five.
This is Prop five, and currently, the council can assert jurisdiction by a two-thirds vote, and within twenty-one working days, within five day, meeting days of the action by a commission, all commissions of the city. And by a majority vote within twenty-one days, can act as that commission, and change the action of the commission, and it in fact legally becomes whatever commission it's asserted jurisdiction over. What is being proposed in charter section two forty, the unified charter section two forty-four, two forty-five, is that with a two-thirds vote, the council can assert jurisdiction, but only for the purposes of voting the item up or down. And it takes a two-thirds vote to, to vote it up or down as opposed to the majority vote in the current charter. And the following, as you can see on page six, actions of the ethics commission, the pension commission, the employee retirement system, the water and power employee retirement system, and some of the quasite personnel decisions of the board of civil service commissions, employee relations issues, board of police commissioners, personnel decisions, et cetera, would be exempt from this, which they currently are not.
Yeah, I think, I think we have some people who want to be heard on this. Mr. Alatorre?
Just so I, I'm trying to understand this. Now, so in other words, in, in, to a certain extent, you maintain Prop five for the purposes of voting, of agreeing with the decision or disagreeing with the decision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Let's just say hypothetically, we disagree with the decision. Then what?
What you would do is with a two-thirds vote, say no.
We disagree. All right, then what?
The item would go back to the commission.
Okay, and then?
They get to try again.
All right, and let's just say that they-
Do it again.
They do it again.
And if the council with a two-thirds vote, and a two-thirds vote to turn and disagree, it goes back.
At what point do we try and seek resolution?
As we stated in our questions and answer document, this does prevent, this does provide the opportunity for stalemate.
So this could go on indefinitely with no resolution? So this could go on indefinitely with no resolution? I mean, is that what it is?
Well, either the commission would get the idea that it was never going to be approved, or the council get tired. I'm not sure which would happen first.
Well, this is, this makes no sense.
Maybe they get the word. Go ahead, Mr. Savornic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This has been one of the sticking points that I have seen through this whole debate in regards to this legislative game of ping pong that we could carry on in some future endeavor in regards to an issue that may be, may have very serious consequences to the city of Los Angeles. And what bothers me more than anything else is that with the current provision before us, yes, it could be a stalemate, yes, there could be no solution. And we know very well that most of the time when an issue comes before this council, that is, and a lot of times in the terminology, it's either a friendly or an unfriendly Prop 5, is that if it was a Prop 5 where the city council had to assert jurisdiction over one of the commission actions, we have done it very sparingly. We've done it with the greatest amount of debate that we've been able to do, and even now, the way things are right now, we have to take two actions, which I think has been overlooked in this entire reform package. One, we have to vote to assert jurisdiction. We have to do that first. And if there are not 10 votes of the city council to assert jurisdiction, we can't do it. Then, once the issue is before us, and then we are sitting as that commission, then you need to get the majority vote in order to go ahead and have something changed or amended. And so the two-thirds is required right now in regards to the asserting of the jurisdiction. Then it takes eight votes to act. My question would be, in regards to what's before us, the veto only takes two-thirds, correct? So there's only one action under the proposed unified charter. Is that correct, Mr. Comrie?
That's right.
And so we would just act to veto, and that's it.
That's right.
And as Mr. Alatorre said, if the commission chose not to amend their action, the non-amended action would come back to the city council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or it could sit there in commission.
Yes.
Okay, so it comes back to the council non-amended, which means the council could either accept it now or veto it again. And that could go back and forth until, as Mr. Deaton said, that the commission either got the message, or the council got tired of vetoing. That's the only mechanism to resolve this right now under the unified charter. Is that correct?
Yes, but we've had similar experience in the past, and generally a commission pretty much hears the debate from its staff and modifies and sends back after they hear the debate. Now, I agree, though, that you could get into this ping pong you're talking about, but we used to get involved in that with the water and power rates, and once the council acted and sent it back, the commission pretty much changed it and sent it back again.
Took us 11 months one time.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, one of the things, one of the things that I think we have to be very, very conscious of is in, if the spirit of this unified charter is to streamline city government and make government more accountable, and more accessible, and more responsible, I don't see the tweaking of Prop 5 here, or the significant change. I think it's more than a tweak.
I'm going to tweak you.
Doing anything, doing anything to go ahead and make this proposal more streamlined and more efficient.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
I just wanted to ask the commission members that are present what their response is to this ping pong effect, because it seems that there's lack of a decision maker in the process. I mean, ultimately, who makes the decision? And it has been my experience on several issues that were of major concern to the city, that that's where we had the dilemma. And I'm just asking, what was your perception? Because we have had instances where we sent things back to the commissions in good spirit, and the commissions refused to change their action.
Councilman, this was a matter of substantial discussion and debate in each of the commissions. So I'll speak to the appointed commission discussion of it, and Erwin Chemerinsky could speak to the elected commission. First of all, part of this is an expectation that the council and the commission will do, as Keith Comrie has said, intend to work things out. And sometimes we overlook the way that already exists in the charter in parallel situations. If you introduce, if there's a piece of legislation that the council adopts and the mayor vetoes, there's sometimes an expectation that there'll be an effort to make another try balancing out the wishes of each of the parties. But we don't see that as a ping pong never ending, because under practice, they've just worked it out. There are other situations where the approval of the firing of a general manager by a majority vote would theoretically leave a manager without any relationship with the mayor. It just gets worked out by the parties recognizing what the council will is. Our expectation is in large part that the council and the government will adapt to this, as it has to many other seeming ping pong situations in the current charter, and work it out, that the threat of a veto on important actions will require that the commission come back with something that is acceptable to the council. That's the effect. Now, this was a compromise also as well between those who wanted to do away with Prop 5 and those who wanted to maintain it in its totality. And in that respect, it was also an effort to reach both sides of that, those constituencies that felt strongly about it. In our view, over a time period, though, the council and the commissions will adapt, and it will work.
I have relatively little to add to Mr. Kiefer's answer. This was a product of great study in the elected commission. It's based on a model that used to exist at the federal level and exists in almost all states for a legislative veto, and their experience has not been the ping pong effect that was described. Just two quick points about it. First, this would continue to be a two-step process as it is under the current charter, one step being the assertion of jurisdiction, and the second to veto. And second, as Mr. Kiefer said, the commission has every incentive to work with the council, to come back with a proposal the council will accept. The commission knows that the council could continue to veto it and then be stymied. Moreover, the commission is going to need other support from the council in the future, including in the next budget cycle, so there's no reason for the commission to have such a fight or such an impasse with the council. Again, the experience at the federal level with this model's been used, and almost every state where it's been used, is it's worked very well.
You know, I heard someplace, once you close the door to reality, it still comes in through a window.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goldberg.
Well, I just have one question about this, because all of them have already been asked. But about half of the Prop 5s that we did were what we were called friendly Prop 5s, okay? They were at the request of the department. So you have now eliminated our ability to act in a friendly Prop 5 and actually change their decision in, because, or do something, because what they wanted us to do a couple of times is to do something with Prop 5, to act in their place so that they could get a bond rating or a amount of money taken care of to act in their place. Since we can no longer act in their place, but only veto, haven't you eliminated a way to help them act quickly between their meetings?
Councilmember, I would like to call Deputy Director Mary Strobel to answer that question, and I had neglected to introduce both Rayfield Sonenschein, our executive director, and Deputy Executive Director Mary Strobel.
The unified charter has added a new subsection, which is subsection 245B, to try to address the issue of friendly Prop 5s. That section provides that the council can, either before an action is taken or after it's taken, wave review under Prop 5 so that you can get finality to those commission decisions without having to go through the process that happens now where jurisdiction has to be asserted and then the action approved.
Oh, but that category opens up a much bigger can of worms than simply a friendly Prop 5. Okay, so you've taken care of one thing, but I think you've created another problem. But when we get to that part of the charter, I'll talk about it then. On procedure, how are we going to proceed through this, Mr. Chair?
I don't know what the intent, what I think we should do is to go, and I'll leave it up to Mr. Farah when he gets back, would be to go through the document that we have here. And I know as an example, I forgot on the reapportionment commission, God, I mean, this could be a windfall for somebody seeking office, he does the reapportionment, then runs against it. I don't know if it prohibits people from running for political office if they're on this reapportion. But that's something we can deal with. But I think that we should go through this document, and then if there are other questions, I think we ought to just-
Can I suggest that we do like all the 100 series and then all the 200 series? Because there are some things that are not on that document that may need to be raised, and, but they're with, if we do it by those-
Mr. Deaton, do you have a problem with that? We could do that, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're in the, we're in the 200 series right now.
Can we go back to the 100?
And we'll go back to 100 after we finish 200, okay?
Okay.
All right, all right. All right, Ms. Walters? You're okay? All right, I was going, I'll ask, Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard again?
I have several questions in the 200.
Oh, not on, not on this item?
Not on that.
Okay.
When you start the 200.
All right. Anybody else want to be heard on Prop 5? Okay, next item. We'll go back, okay? Yes?
Section 254, as I stated before, gives the, this is the process suggested in the unified charter for establishing legislative positions, and the council by resolution could establish the city's position. The mayor has the ability to veto, and the council then has the ability to override that veto. And the council can by ordinance set up procedures to implement the provisions of this section.
Okay.
261C gives the council, excuse me, the controller broad authority to review accounting practices in offices and departments. Essentially, this, although different, provides some teeth to the existing charter sections that are Charter Section 46 and 47.1, which has the controller responsible for the general supervision of the accounting of the city. 261K is, requires the controller to conduct performance audits of all departments.
Excuse me, Mr. Deaton, before we move on to 261K.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to be heard on? Yeah, on 261C.
All right.
Does the controller's broad authority also include the Department of Finance?
Yes, it would. It would be any accounting function in the city.
As it relates to the accounting of that department.
Just the accounting.
What about as it relates to their collections or their strategies to go after revenue for the city in regards to recouping revenue owed to the city?
In 261K, it broadens their audit power to do not just financial, but do some performance looks, and that would happen in that category.
Right, thank you.
I don't think 261C does it particularly, but I do agree with Keith that the performance audits would allow the controller to audit that, the performance of that department in that area, which is the one I'm now on, 261K, which requires the controller to conduct performance audits of all departments and programs. I might point out the existing charter provides for the city administrative officer to do management audits. That is continued. In addition to that, the unified charter provides for these performance audits in the controller's office. 262C, this, the controller's authority currently is that the controller can withhold approval of any demand which in his or her opinion is not a legal demand. That is expanded from legal to unauthorized or improper. And if the controller finds that it's either improper, illegal, or unauthorized, they file a report with the mayor and the council, and the council can then consider and may overrule or sustain the objections of the controller, and then that happens. Currently, the only difference here is the expansion of the reasons for not approving the demand. 266, currently, the charter provides that the mayor and council, on a, I believe, five-year basis, can do surveys of the proprietary departments, harbor, airports, and water and power. In the unified charter, this has been expanded from just the mayor and the council to the controller as well. So all three entities would have to involve themselves in this five-year survey of the independents.
You know, and I, when we go back, I'm going to ask, you know, there's some questions on, what I'm attempting to understand is what was, what was wrong with the system the way it is now? What were we trying to fix? And what is the rationale between adding another, maybe, could answer that? I mean, I-
Speak to the controller.
Okay. You know, on this item, just as an example, I mean, the way the system operates now is that it requires the mayor and the council to contract with an outside entity. Can you tell me why we add another neighbor, and what happens if only two of them agree that, or agree on the need to do something, or on the person, I mean, just because the third one doesn't? It doesn't happen? What, so what is the rationale behind this? What a change?
Both commissions increased the authority of the controller with respect to audits and performance audits. The elected commission in particular focused on this, and I would like to ask Erwin to speak to that.
The controller's office testified to our commission about difficulty in even receiving reports with regard to these audits. The elected commission felt that the controller had a preeminent role with regard to auditing, and therefore should be involved in this process. In fact, our provision was that the controller would be responsible for causing this to happen. As part of the compromise in the unified charter, and to assure that both the council and the mayor are properly involved, it says the three shall jointly do this, and since none of them are going to be doing it, it's just a matter of arranging for it to be done, we believe this isn't likely to be an area of impasse.
Well, I mean, if there is a disagreement under the need by one of the entities, what does that mean?
We believe that, as in many areas, this leaves the entities to work out that disagreement so they can jointly do that.
Let's deal with the reality, folks. I mean, you know, you know, you're leaving it, but what happens?
Richard, let's-
I just want to know. What is, what happens when there isn't an agreement?
Well, previously, this provision said the mayor and the council.
Right.
And you had the same situation there.
No, excuse me. Two is easier than three. If you, all I'm saying is, can one initiate it, even if two don't? Or can, can, if two agree there's a need and one doesn't, can it still be initiated? What, that's all I'm asking.
Not unlike the current charter, where it would take both to agree on the process. This requires three.
So this requires three.
This requires the controller to be a part of that process as well, councilman.
All right, thank you. Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard?
I apologize, but are we going through all of the 200s now?
And then we're going to go back to 100 and do it.
Okay, then I don't have any further questions.
All right, go ahead. Take their names off.
On page 10 is changes in the council's control over litigation. Currently, the current charter provides the city attorney to prosecute and defend all actions for the city when directed to do so by the council, and stipulates that the council controls all litigation of the city and may employ attorneys to assist the city attorney with the city attorney's approval in writing. The proposed change provides, and I refer you to the item one, that the council or the mayor independently may make client decisions in litigation involving matters over which the charter gives the council or the mayor responsibility. I think it's appropriate for the two commissions to explain, I think that this is an important issue, at least to understand as to which lawsuits the mayor will be responsible for and which lawsuits the council will be responsible for, and the nature of how that will be resolved amongst the various, what kinds of litigation would the mayor be responsible for, what kinds of litigation would the council be responsible for, and at what point would the council be responsible on a financial issue. So I quite frankly have, and I made this clear to both commissions and to the city attorney, which is now making his way to the, to the microphone, this isn't an area that I understand, but I'm sure that after listening to all these attorneys, you will.
Could I just ask what it is that is wrong with the process, what the commission felt was wrong with the process, and why what is being recommended here is an improvement to the process rather than the opposite?
All right, I'll ask Mr. Chemerinsky also to speak to that. We found a substantial amount of criticism-
By who?
By some of the staff of the city council, as well as the outside, that there was confusion as to who the city attorney speaks with during the course of- as to who the city attorney speaks with during the course of litigation, and what kind of direction is given to the city attorney, and what kind of guidelines the city attorney uses in consulting with various parts of the government. So settlement authority was clear under the charter that the council has settlement authority and the control of litigation in general. But, for instance, if a suit is filed that's that's dealing with a department, does the city attorney consult with the department at all about that? And of course, we found as a matter of practice, yes, the city attorney did do that, but it was not clear to outsiders as to who he consulted or she consult would consult with, under what circumstances. What we attempted to do was to clarify that consulting relationship and who was speaking for the city in those cases before it ever got to settlement or was brought to the attention of the city council. And it seemed to us there was a great gap in terms of information with respect to that, and very little guidance for those to look to as to what was done. I think the city attorney's office understood that in its own mind, but we found that others did not. So this was an effort to clarify who they spoke to, who was speaking for the client. At the same time, we maintained settlement authority primarily in the council. So the council maintains the authority to establish limits for which others may decide. For instance, a claims board comprised of the the mayor, the president of the council, and the head of the finance committee might make decisions that the council would delegate to them up to a certain amount. The council might delegate authority to the mayor for settlement. But generally, all those decisions with respect to settlement of monetary amounts numbers are set by the council. Also, any issues involving policy are ultimately decided by the council. The question was, what's happening in the meantime? What's happening in the process of prosecuting this litigation or defending it? And who is watching that and to whom is the is the city attorney looking for advice on that? And that's what we attempted to clarify here.
Did you have some comment?
Very briefly, one of the subjects that I teach.
Erwin, look at me, and that way you'll speak right into the microphone.
Thank you. One of the subjects that I teach concerns professional responsibility, one of the hardest issues in professional responsibility. A school with which you have some familiarity, USC. I've done that, too, and it's been a pleasure. One of the hardest issues in the law of professional responsibility is who speaks for the client when you're dealing with a government entity? And we heard a great deal of testimony criticizing now the fact that often when there are suits involving departments, the inability of departments or the mayor to have input as to those suits. And we heard that from city council staff, as well as those from the department and from the mayor's office. What we tried to do was deal with that through a system that Mr. Kiefer describes. What we're saying is there are certain areas where it's clear the council should be speaking for the city. If there's a challenge to an ordinance, for example, a challenge to a council action, it's the council that should be speaking for the city. But in some areas, areas where the mayor is entrusted responsibility, the mayor should be the one who speaks for the city. And there are some areas where we've created, for example, the proprietary departments, where the boards of those departments should be speaking for the city. And in some areas where the city attorney is initiating litigation, the city attorney should be the one speaking for the city. We realize there is an ambiguity there, but we solve that by saying, when there is an ambiguity, it is for the city attorney to decide who speaks for the city among these. And the one other thing I would emphasize is settlement of money claims is apart from everything that I just said. As Mr. Kiefer pointed out, settlement of money claims is ultimately the domain of the council. What we've done is create a system where the council can delegate to the mayor the authority to delegate claims below a certain amount. There's a claims board created to settle claims between two amounts, and above whatever threshold the council sets, the council is the client for settlement purposes and alone can make that decision.
Yeah, but see, the the problem with that. Richard, Richard, let's let's hear from the city attorney. Oh, all right. And then I'll ask.
You know, our office worked very closely with both charter commissions and with the conference committee to come up with the Unified Charter. There's just a little clause in the present city charter between two commas in section forty-two delineating the responsibilities of the city attorney that says, provided that the council should control all litigation. Just that little clause is what we've used to come up with the theory that the council is the one to go to for litigation, to give us direction, to settle litigation, everything else. This charter is much more specific. It lays out how the city attorney goes about making these decisions, which part of the client, which is always going to be the client is the municipal corporation known as the City of L.A., who does the city attorney go to to get direction on lawsuits? Where it's clearly a department that's under the executive control of the mayor, it is the mayor's office or whoever the mayor designates that we go to to get direction on litigation. With the council, you know, anything involving an ordinance, we go to the council. Policy matters, anything that would not involve money. On a on a case where both money, under department is sought in a lawsuit under a department controlled by the mayor, but also policy considerations are involved, we must consult with both the mayor and the council. And additionally, the count we still have this strong attorney-client relationship with both the mayor and the council throughout. The council has the ability through their ordinances to require the city attorney to come and report on all litigation, whether or not it's under a mayor-controlled department or not. The council can have that role to demand that the city attorney come and report on all litigation. And again, as is pointed out, settlement authority flows from this body.
Yeah, but the problem, Jimmy, is is this, is that we're the ones that are accountable ultimately for paying the money out, nobody else. But somebody else could be driving it, and if it doesn't if it doesn't go well, then we're ultimately are the fault people. See, where now, there is accountability, because we drive it and we ultimately have to vote to settle it. But if something is being driven by somebody else, and when it doesn't go well, then ultimately who is the fault person? The fault person isn't going to be the city attorney. The fault person isn't going to be the respective proprietary departments or the mayor. The fault person is going to be the city council that has to vote to settle something. And that, to me, I don't mind. I don't mind paying out the money if I at least am in it throughout the process, not just coming to me at the end and saying, oh, by the way, here's a settlement offer, and that's it. Ms. Goldberg.
Okay, but the but section two seventy-one E just says, give us information. So let me ask some specific questions. There's a suit around a contract. Who's in charge? Who's the who's the client?
Most contracts, that would be, we would go to the mayor for direction on the litigation. Some contracts are with the city.
But the council, but the council approved the contract.
You're doing a great job, attorney.
Well, it, you know, if it involves a city department.
Well, we don't have any ordinances that don't involve city departments.
Right.
So we pass an ordinance that involves a city department, so then who does it go to? The mayor, because it's a department?
Yes.
Or the council, because it's an ordinance?
It would go to the contracts and other ancillary functions of running government ought to be with an executive branch who's supervising the government. That was the the strong message that was being delivered.
From the mayor's office.
From the mayor's office, virtually unopposed before the elected commission. And, you know, the the idea here is to try and.
So in essence, all litigation goes to the mayor's office, because ordinances are not about vacuums, they're about departments.
Well, if, you know, land use ordinances, you know, any anything to do with legislation that the city has passed.
But legislation is not about what? It's about it's about how things run?
Well, for instance, if 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 somebody challenges our our curfew ordinance, which is enforced by the police department, we don't go to the mayor for direction on that or the police department. We would come back to the council who passed that ordinance.
I see. How about sexual harassment lawsuits?
Sexual harassment lawsuit or discrimination lawsuit that that only involved seeking monetary relief, would we would go to the mayor's office for direction? If it if it.
Oh, that's great.
If it involved seeking a change in the way the department does its business, a policy matter, then it would have to involve the city council.
So my understanding is the city attorney then becomes kind of like the, in certain instances, when we have these questions, would become the person who would make the determination as to who has that authority. Is that correct?
Pardon?
I mean, you would be the one, your office would be the one that would ultimately determine who has that authority.
That's correct. The city attorney would determine.
Now, and and again, I think, following through with some of the comments my colleague Al Tori made, in terms of the budgetary issues, you know, I've seen many matters from a legal perspective that are dealing with policy, that are being resisted by departments because budgetary implications are being resisted by the mayor, they're dealing with personnel issues overall. I mean, there's something that keeps on coming back to us on an ongoing basis right now, where we even had to have outside counsel. And we're still trying to resolve, and it's basically pending litigation. How would that come about? How would you put together who's going to be ultimately responsible for that decision? I mean, it's easy to say, okay, we'll shell out a hundred million dollars, and then we have to figure out how to pave the streets.
You know, the I think what, again, the the settlement of of lawsuits is the ultimate power to control a lawsuit. That's why that one little clause in the charter has has expanded to use so much power. The council can still insert itself really into any case and initiate discussions about settlement, even a case over which the mayor would would have have the voice, I guess that's what we kept talking about, who speaks for the client, in a case where the mayor would speak for the client. The council never gives up its authority to be involved in a settlement discussion unless it's already done so by ordinance, as we see in this, whether or not the council wants to delegate amounts to the mayor that they they're not interested in talking about. But the council's going to have retain the power to decide what limit. Is that going to be a low limit? Is that going to be a medium limit? Is that going to be a high limit? The council will retain that, again, because the council, as as was pointed out, ultimately is going to be responsible to people, whether or not taxes have to be raised or budgets have to be cut.
Let me ask Mr. Deaton the same kind of question, only because he's been our mediator on some major issues and.
I think the essence of the my either confusion or problem is that if you have a lawsuit and for a period of time, there is no monetary request made by the people who are suing us, and there is a long period of time in which there's a conduct of that lawsuit, and at the end of the day, dollars settle it. That's when, my view of this, the council sees it. And at that point, there's not much choice, except to take the heat. And it's that, and and I think the either that's the issue that I think is the most difficult, whether it's a sexual harassment suit that doesn't, nobody, they don't ask for money. They ask for a change in in policies, or they ask for other kinds of activities, or the it's the at the end of the day, that the dollar amount isn't helpful. It's almost as though the limit should be very high, because the council shouldn't is going to be taking all the heat and not having any responsibility for resolving it. That's the essence, I think, of my problem. And I I don't, and I think that's the the core issue from my perspective.
Sometimes, the initiation of litigation is actually the most significant aspect of a suit rather than the settlement of it. For example, on several occasions in the last two years here, the voters have passed statewide initiatives, such as, say, two eighteen requiring a vote of the people before you can raise taxes. And the council or and or the city attorney wanted to bring a lawsuit to invalidate the voter's wishes. In a situation like that, let's say the voters pass two eighteen, I'm I'm reading here, for example, it says, the city attorney can initiate civil litigation on behalf of the city. Let's say that the voters pass two eighteen. It requires now that all tax raises of taxes have to be approved by the voters. The city attorney doesn't like that, and he decides to bring a lawsuit to to try to overturn it in court. And nothing to do with monetary damages, nothing to do with any of that. It is a major political statement of highly controversial nature. In a situation like that, would it be the council that would have to approve the initiation of that litigation? Or under this wording, could a city attorney do it on his own?
Well, the city attorney can initiate litigation, but it doesn't take away the council's ability to basically still control that litigation. Again, it would be they they could then order the city attorney to dismiss the litigation the next day.
But see, I I think that that's that we had that issue in here, and ultimately, it's the council that took the heat for or against. So I think that that is a significant change in terms of permitting the city attorney to initiate litigation on 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 matters like that that are broad policy nature, that really aren't monetary. Now, what about the settlement? And I we got into the settlement on the settlement of lawsuits that, again, don't involve monetary, such as such as, well, the most famous one we had was the chief of police, the former chief of police's lawsuit to be reinstated. Others involved others involved PDID and others. Where the where the settlements involved very, very significant policy decisions within the police department, not necessarily money. Who makes those settlement decisions when they don't involve money?
The city council.
Under all, under all, okay, that is extremely important, because I've seen settlements be made that are far more important than money. George?
Councilman, also, under the old charter, forty-two point three, the the city attorney could initiate litigation on his own as well. So under the current charter, that exists. The council also can direct the initiation of, so that fact that the city attorney can begin litigation on a civil matter is not is not a change.
But does it need ultimately council approval?
That you'd have to ask the city attorney.
Let's take the most.
Right now.
One that, for example, we all agreed on, the initiation of lawsuits or joining in lawsuits with, say, tobacco companies. But let's say there was a disagreement on that. Could the city attorney do that on his own, even if it was against the wishes of the council?
Well, I can do that now. For instance, I decided to initiate litigation to challenge proposition one eighty-seven even in advance of the city's council's determination of whether or not to join in that. Now, the council could have instructed me to dismiss that.
I thought you came to us to do it, and we had a big debate over that. I mean, some of us thought you should, and some of us thought you shouldn't.
Well, because I I believe that in initiating, although I didn't believe I needed your approval, knowing that you could tell me not to, I think it's always.
But the point, the point is, I agree with you. I agree with you that it was right to go to the council to do that, because that what my concern is, if, say, another city attorney chose that on their own, we don't care what the city council thinks, could they?
Thank you, Mr. Wechs.
Could they? I could just answer, could they initiate it? And how far down the line could they go, assuming there was a disagreement?
Go ahead, Mr.
How would this rule? How what would happen in a situation like that? Say, another city attorney decided to do something very unpopular here. How far?
You 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 made the question, now answer.
Well, they can only begin something, but it's only as long as the council would allow a city attorney to proceed. The council could instruct the city attorney, since they have the ability to control litigation through settlement, to dismiss anything that the council disagreed with. If the if the city attorney refused to do that, I think that, you know, they would be violating their ethical obligations to the client. They could be taken before the state's.
That would be a good check. Mrs. Musakowski.
I'd like to run through a couple of other examples of litigation settlement. Most involve, many involve, money and policy. A sexual harassment suit, very often, the person bringing the suit wants money and a change in policy. Would that then come both to the mayor and the council for settlement discussion?
We would expect that initially, treating that as as a lawsuit involving department, the day-to-day decisions would go to the mayor. But anything that had to do with policy would have to come to the council for direction.
What about wrongful termination? We're now the mayor will now have the authority to to fire the general managers. In the past, this council has seen a lot of general managers who were terminated, who brought suit and sought both monetary damages and reinstatement.
Again, it would be just like the answer to the last question, initial direction would be given by the mayor's office. However, if reinstatement is contemplated as a as a settlement of the case, that would have to come to the council.
Okay, let's go into a planning area. We we adopt a a policy that doesn't allow something to be developed. We get a takings lawsuit that is both a is a consequence of an ordinance, a consequence of a policy action, but a monetary result.
That's totally within the council's direction. The mayor would have no role in that.
And the general kind of liability that we see when land. And the general kind of liability that we see when landslides occur and litigation ensues in terms of people saying that the city owes some obligation for that.
Well, I think in an inverse condemnation, I believe that would go to the council for direction on how to proceed.
Even though it's generally money? You've indicated that money...
Well, you know, I guess it might depend on how that might proceed. We're going to have, we're going to have some, you know, growing pains as we go through this, working out these ideas. The idea is to involve the mayor whenever we're talking about departments' actions that have resulted in the lawsuit occurring, where money is being sought as the only remedy. There's more than money being sought, or we're talking about reinstating people, or we're talking about changes in policies, or we're challenging ordinances or legislative decisions at the council, then we have to come to the council.
And isn't it true that some suits, when they're brought, we have the ability, if we intervene early through discussions with the city attorney, to avoid monetary damages if we offer a policy change? And so would that then be something that the city attorney would bring to the council? Because as a matter of policy and control, we can intervene, interject early, which might save us from significant monetary damages down the line, if we continue the suit? I'm seeing the ascent over there by the other table.
Again, I would, I would look to those other provisions requiring the city attorney to report to the council on matters in litigation, and then the council could inform the city attorney at an early stage that, you know, their desire to offer something other than money to settle it, and the council could then interject itself into the process. Would the city attorney come directly to the city council with that idea under this? Maybe, and maybe not. I think it would depend on how the city attorney analyzed the case. If they hadn't thought of this yet, they may need to get some direction from the council. I don't think they're going to seek that initially. I think they're going to be going to the mayor initially, because they would view that as a money case. But the council's ability to require the city attorney to report on all litigation, even that that would be directed by the mayor, allows the council to give input to the city attorney early on. And again, because the council can ultimately settle litigation, all settlement authority flows from you, you could direct a settlement.
Thank you. Mr. Alatorre? Or Mr. Fuhr?
It's hard to muster Mr. Alatorre's enthusiasm for this issue, but I'm going to try. Listen, I wanted to summarize what I understood today coming into this hearing, and you tell me where I misunderstood the fundamental issues here. First, with respect to initiating litigation, I understood that prior to, that under the current charter, city attorney can unilaterally do it, and under the new charter, the city attorney can unilaterally do it.
Yes.
That the check in, under both the old and the new, is the council's ability, upon initiation, to say, "Don't you dare take another step, and there's no lawsuit I'm aware of on which anything happens in those first couple days that can't be stopped." With respect to settlement, when it comes to monetary issues currently, the practice, and I should be corrected if I'm mistaken, is that the city council, Budget and Finance Committee, actually, has authority up to $100,000 to unilaterally settle a matter. And under the new charter, the city council by ordinance collectively has to determine that threshold level beneath which unilateral decisions can be made, and above which it's up to us to collectively decide. And in fact, we could set that threshold lower than 100 if we wanted to, we could set it at 25 if we wanted to, and assure that every matter, large or small, comes to the full city council.
Yes.
All right. With respect to settlements that don't relate to money, exclusively at least, almost every policy decision relates to money ultimately as well, though, those settlements too, when it comes to policy, have to come to the council, correct?
Yes.
All right. So then that leaves us with the most nettlesome problem, and that is, who's the client for purposes of the strategic decision-making that takes place in the course of litigation?
Yeah.
The current approach is that the city council is the client, for, speaks for the city is a better way to put it, because as everyone pointed out, the rule of question is, who is the city when it comes to these client decisions? And that has been very complicated, and we've had controversy about that since I've been here even. Currently, the city council does it. Under the new charter, if it's merril authority overseeing the entity that is implicated in the suit, the mayor has it. If it's council-matic authority, the council has it. The council members who have spoken so far have expressed concern that that gives the mayor too much authority in making strategic decisions. And there's reason for that concern, but let me tell you what I understood the situation to be at least, and that is, under the new charter, the city council members could, and in fact, are mandated by the charter, to determine how frequently we want reports from the city attorney on either all manner of cases, or a specific universe of cases, right?
Or a specific case.
Or a specific case in particular. For example, if a lawsuit is filed that involves a sexual harassment claim, the city council upon, could pass an ordinance that says, "Every lawsuit over X number of thousands of dollars worth of claim or implicating policy decisions, upon filing, we must hear about it." We could say that, right? Under the new charter?
Yes.
And upon hearing about it, under the new charter, we could say, "With respect to the XYZ versus City of Los Angeles case, we want reports of litigation every 30 seconds, or every week, or every month, whatever we want," right?
Right.
All right. So it's up to us to be apprised of litigation, we can determine that by ordinance, and it's up to us to determine how frequently the reporting should be. As you pointed out, that does not give us the ability to say no to a strategic decision just in discussion, that, say, the mayor would make. But it gives the council the ability to say, "As a policy matter, we don't like this strategy," and to adopt an ordinance that preempts that from happening.
Would you look at your time?
All right. Okay, fine. 10 more seconds. Not that I know what it is here, but 10 more seconds. Or it's, or we could say, "We intend to initiate settlement negotiations at this juncture," and that gets us in play no matter what. Is that right? Okay.
Yes. Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard?
No, that's all right.
Okay, next item.
Page 11 just outlines the process by which the, there's a claims board and different amounts of settlements would be either provided to the claim board, claims board, and actually provides for a fairly organized way of settlements. Page 12, currently, the current charter provides that the commissions of the Department of Water and Power harbor any commission controlling a department operating a public utility, blah, 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 shall employ, with the permission of the council and the city attorney, attorneys to assist the city attorney. In the new charter, the unified charter, this eliminates the requirement for council approval for proprietary departments, the ethics commission, and the retirement systems. Basically, now, any time the Department of Water and Power Harbor, Ethics, et cetera, wants to hire an outside city attorney to help them, or to help the city attorney help them...
Has to be approved by the council.
It has to be approved by the city attorney and by the council. In this instance, it still has to be approved by the city attorney, but it's the boards of the proprietary departments involved, or Ethics and/or the Pension and Retirement Boards, that would make that decision by themselves.
And the reason that we wanted this provision, I think it's a good provision, is that in departments where the city council really doesn't have direct control over the funds that these independent departments do, if they, in conjunction with the city attorney, decide they need outside counsel to assist them in any legal matter, really, they're the ones in the best position to make that determination of who that outside counsel is. Having, have to come to the council delays the process somewhat.
Explain to me what it is that has been happening that necessitates this change? What is, what evil is it attempting? What evil have we seen out there? Or inefficiency have we seen out there that necessitates this change?
Probably eliminate some time.
That's the reason.
So it just eliminates the time? And that's the reason?
Well, also because these departments, the council really doesn't have the authority to, you know, over their funds, these, we've created independent departments that have control over their own funds. They're going to be also the ones that we go to for direction on litigation. The added step of having to schedule it before the council, to, whether or not to hire an attorney, leaves us at a disadvantage when we need to respond very quickly to a lawsuit or some other pressing legal matter. It allows the city to function in a more businesslike, efficient fashion, in an area where the council really, for the most part, has, you know, I don't remember any situation where the council was all upset and wanted to change who the outside counsel was that has been selected by the outside department and the city attorney. It's going to be a more efficient business way of doing things.
Oh, there has been times.
Okay, let's move right along.
Well, as indicated before, the, we're now finished with our chart relative to 200 and, the 200s, and so I think there was an interest to go, and that anybody that had an issue in the 100s or 200s could raise them at this point. However...
Mrs. Walters?
In the 100s, item 115, page 8, that eliminates the departments of animal reg and building safety, building and safety, and it says that it doesn't really eliminate, there's no intention to affect the, it said, "Both departments continue to exist and to perform the powers and duties prescribed for them in the charter immediately prior to the operative date, until the department's powers or duties are changed or eliminated by ordinance." What are we, what's the purpose here? What are we eliminating? What are we going to do with them? An animal reg is very important to my district, given just packs of roaming wild dogs.
Basically, what this does, it takes, not all departments of the city are in the charter.
Okay.
Animal reg and building and safety currently are.
So it leaves it to ordinance to create it.
An ordinance in the administrative code. But I just, but basically, the reason we reported this is that there's less ability to change things in a department if it is in the charter, but if it's in the administrative code, it does provide more flexibility. But both of these departments are important departments of the city, and we wanted you to know that that was happening.
All right. My questions are only restricted to one at this point. Is that right? And then I have a question in the twos.
100s and 200s.
100s and 200s, all right. 233 reassines the power over temporary transfers of employees. So it takes it away from the CAO and gives it to the mayor. That's page 5 of 24. It's 5, page 5 in this document I hold in my hand, and 23 in the charter book. We hear a lot about the council shouldn't micromanage, but this seems to be a pretty high-level micromanagement. To me, the mayor's going to have the authority, instead of a staff person, instead of CAO, in reassigning temporary employees. Can you give me what the thinking was on this?
I can try to do that. The sense was that the CAO is a, is a resource for the government, reporting both to the mayor and to the council, but it is not, he is, he or she is not a line officer of the city. So in our mind, this was an aberrational part of the current charter, that, to have the CAO make these changes. So that the purpose here is the mayor can make these changes on a temporary basis, rather than the CAO. That's, the reason behind it, though, relates to the function of the CAO, which is a resource administrative support group, but not a, not an office with line authority over the government.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Goldberg?
Excuse me. I apologize. You're in the 100s and 200s?
Yeah.
First question I have is on page 3, section 104.
Page 3, 104.
G2, oh, I guess it's, yeah, G2. It says, "Should the city acquire any improvement or service, blah, 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 shall not exceed the valuation of the property." Why was that taken out?
Go ahead.
This is on advice of city staff.
Hello?
It was on advice of city staff, so...
What does that mean? Does that mean we can now pay more than it's worth?
Because we've been ignoring it all along.
Is that why? Does that mean that the prohibition against paying more than property is worth is now lifted? Hello? I don't care who answers it. Section 104G2 has now been deleted, which says that we have to not exceed the value of the property. And I want to know why we would take out of the charter a prohibition against paying more than something is worth.
I, my recollection is that the reason, as I recall, the city attorney and some staff suggested this, was that if you had a piece of property whose appraised value was X, say, and then it's in between two properties that you have to, you want to proceed to buy it, then you would be limited by this provision. I don't think there's any intent to go above what the value is of the property.
Okay.
We can look into that.
All right, I'd like it looked into.
I recall the discussion, but I can't.
Page 4, letter I, nondiscrimination, says this paragraph has been moved to section 1024. But when I looked at section 1024, which is in Book 2, it's been deleted, and there's no replacement.
We can quickly answer that. If you, that was a technical oversight, and if you look in the, in the blue copy of the Clean Charter, I'm sorry, if you look in the blue copy of the Clean Charter, which does not have the markup changes, but simply has them all incorporated, that paragraph is in there. It was a technical error in the computer where we apologize for, where instructions to where to find it were there.
I can't keep up. I just finished going through the one in the binder when they delivered the ones not in the binder.
I do apologize.
Okay, that's good. We're very happy to hear that it's okay. Page 7, section C, you've removed, on or after the operative date, you've removed all acts of the legislature relating to the city. Why did you take that part out?
Are you, I just want to make sure I'm following, Councilman. You're in the red line version?
I can only do that one. I had no time when I got it this morning, as I came into council, to mark up the other one.
If you just cite the section again?
Yes. It's on page 7. It's, used to be labeled D, but now it's C. It's at the top of the page. And deleted has been all acts of the legislature relating to the city.
Okay. Mary Strubel?
That was, that was removed.
Hello, we need a mic here.
Yeah, don't look at me, just speak in the mic.
That was removed at the suggestion of city staff and the city attorney's office, and we agreed, they pointed out that the charter actually can't have any effect on acts of the legislature. But removing this language doesn't actually have any result in terms of changing the city's status.
Okay. Page 8, section, used to be 113, now 115. It says, "You've made some changes in which departments are listed or not listed, and you have deleted Municipal Arts, Public Utilities, Transportation, Social Service, and Department of Traffic." That means what happens to them? Are they old outdated names? Is that the idea?
Yes, the next paragraph will explain that the Department of Cultural Affairs, which adopted, which has the functions of the Department of Universal Arts.
Okay. Page 9, which I think is an enormous change, an enormous change, is that you're saying that people currently in positions lose their civil service status, because you deleted the part above it, didn't you? Well, the part above it says, "No city or employee shall lose his or her civil status, standing by the reason of adoption, except for those positions specified in this charter as exempt, which may be made exempt." This says, "Individuals in civil service positions that become exempt through the enactment shall not have civil service standing as to their new positions." Now, they, oh, I'm not saying they're losing it for their previous positions. But so if you're in a position now that is not exempt, but when the charter comes into a play is exempt, you lose your civil service status position to the position you're currently in. Is that correct or not correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so I'm not sure we can do that. Can we change the conditions of employment?
I might point out, that was the situation with the general managers, and a couple years ago, and we had to...
They waived, though.
No, they didn't.
They didn't waive.
Now, they haven't challenged us either, but the city attorney opined at that point, and I think still is opining, that we can do that.
We can do this. You can do this...
There is no vested right to civil service status, as to be contrasted with a pension benefit.
Wow, okay.
That was the state of the law at the time, that we advised with regard to the general manager.
All right, so while we're on civil service, let's go on to section 203, page 13. Here again, you have, where the officer is appointed, subject to civil service provisions, removal shall be in accordance with those provisions. You've removed that. So a person who's been appointed as subject to civil service provisions can now be removed by something other than civil service provisions?
That section was relating only to the officers of the city that are listed in section 200, and there won't be any of those officers who are appointed, subject to the civil service provisions. All those officers are exempt.
Section 209, Code of Conduct of Elected Officials Censure. You start out by saying, "All elected officials of the city are expected to conform to the highest standards," but only the council members can be censured? Not the mayor, not the city attorney, not the comptroller? How come?
There's two answers. One is a policy answer in terms of, there was a concern raised with regard to separation of powers of the council censuring other elected officials. The other is frankly, it was part of a compromise, the elected commission had originally included a power of the council to censure all elected officials, and the appointed commission did not include any power to censure, and the compromise was the provision you see before you.
I see. So the compromise is that the mayor, who now has all of the powers increased, but can't be censured for abusing any of them, is that correct?
Well, the mayor...
By the council. We have no impeachment powers, we have no censure power.
Well, that's not any different than under the current charter.
I'm not talking about that. This isn't the current charter we're talking about. We're talking about a new charter, which changes the roles of everybody.
All right, Ms., Ms...
So, so the answer is that the mayor cannot be censured regardless of what the mayor at the time does. Is that correct?
That's right. The censure authority relates to council members.
Well, if we are ever taking motions, I'm going to move to amend that one.
Okay, Mr. Alatorre.
Okay, I'll have to come back, because I'm not done with my 100s and 200s.
On, going back to redistributing, I am, the commission, is there any prohibition for an individual that may serve on the reapportionment commission from being able to run for political office? I mean, I could create, I could see where somebody on the reapportionment commission could...
Cut a, carve out a district.
Carve out a district for his or herself.
Like they do in Sacramento.
And then run. Any thought given to that?
I don't think we have any kind of prohibition with respect to that. The only thought I have with that with Councilwoman would be that the number of people on that commission itself, and the, and the hiring of a staff, and then the ultimate approval by the city council of the district lines would provide protection against that.
What's that? It seems to me that, and I'll make, it makes no sense to be perfectly honest with you. I mean, if you're, I don't know what the purpose of this commission is, to begin with, but if it's for good government, and I would imagine that's really what it's for, then it seems to me this be pure. If we're going to be pure, let's be real pure, and I will make a motion at the appropriate time.
All right, Mr. Wax.
This is probably going to bring up all the related issues all at once, and it goes back to what the 209 that Ms. Goldberg referred to, the Code of Conduct. Mr. Fuhrer knows how greatly I admire him, and it's probably the only thing I've known all along where I so fundamentally disagree with him. This is his baby. I think 209 is horrible. I think it's horrible, not for the reasons Ms. Goldberg mentioned, although I think she has valid concerns, but I think it's horrible, because I think that this council could very easily abuse this. What I see this happening is the majority of the council trying to quiet and censor and hush up the minority of council that sometimes stands alone or speaks up. And I, having, having, having been in that position of, say, for example, objecting strongly to a council operating behind closed doors, cutting deals that I thought were in against the public interest, you know, I've gone out and opened my big mouth and said, "You shouldn't be doing that," and drawn attention to it, and sometimes it brought about change. It has often angered, and I've done it knowing it would anger people, and I know full well that at the heat of the moment, I would have probably been censured for doing some of those things. I don't regret them, I think they were the right things to do, but I feel that Mr. Fuhrer is well-intentioned, and I do believe it's well-intentioned, could turn out to be something that is just used by a majority to shut up a minority that doesn't want to go along with things that they believe are wrong, or things that are being done in private. That said, I also happen to be one who strongly believes that we ought, we have a duty and a responsibility to put this unified charter, as proposed by the two groups, on the ballot in toto for the voters to decide. I just simply believe that when you have two commissions working for two years, going through all of these same things, we owe it to them and to the voters to give their work product an effort to be decided upon. So I, as much as I abhor this, will not support a motion to change this or any other motion, because I really believe we ought to put it on in toto. But if we start changing things around here, that'd be the first one I'd get rid of, for the reasons I described. So I'm torn. I feel strongly against it, but, but I feel that if we go down that road of making changes, even with those things with which we feel strongly about, where everyone will have their own thing they feel strongly about, and we will, we will just totally destroy the work product that I think must morally go on the ballot. And so as much as I oppose this, I'm going to oppose an effort to take it out, because I really feel a stronger issue is putting everything on the ballot. But I must say, I am not happy with this, and I know this is the most well-intentioned, not only by the maker, but I'm sure by the commission. But I can see the abuse of this, having been around here a long time, and it would be counterproductive, it would accomplish. But the thing is, we'll deal with that when it happens. You know, the way I look at it...
Thank you, Mr. Wax.
If that ever happens one day, then we'll, we'll just deal with it. I think it's still more important to go through with the, with the full charter intact.
I also want to, also want to remind everyone that the elected commission can put their charter on as is. So, Ms. Goldberg, you want to be heard again?
Yes, page 23, I think was next. And that's section J, where it says, "In the absence of conflicting provisions in the charter or ordinance, and until revised or rescinded by the mayor, shall be binding on all departments and commissions." And this is, I guess, establishing procedures and implementing policies. The question I have is, is that we have many policies that are not necessarily either listed in the charter or by ordinance, but they are nonetheless policies of the city passed by resolution. Does that mean we have to go back if we do not want the mayor to go against those, to remove or put everything into ordinance that is currently now in resolution, if it's a policy?
I think it's important to notice the limitation on this. The mayor can only issue these executive orders for those matters that are responsibilities entrusted to the mayor. Now, you're right, there may someday be a situation where there is a conflict between a resolution by the council and an executive order of the mayor, and in that circumstance, if the council then made it an ordinance, it would then supersede or trump any executive order.
Say that again?
J is limited with regard to the mayor's authority to issue executive directives. The mayor only has that authority with regard to those matters that are entrusted to the mayor.
Which is how all the departments are run in the entire city.
Well, in some as...
That's not a limit.
Actually, some aspects of the departments, of course, are entrusted to the mayor, and many aspects are governed by ordinance. But as to those things where the mayor has the authority, the mayor can issue executive directives. Now, you raised the issue, what happens if an executive directive is in conflict with a city council resolution? In that instance, if the council wishes its policy to control, they would need to change that into an ordinance.
Okay, so that means we have to go through and find all the policies that are resolutions and change them to ordinance.
Only when they are in conflict with an executive directive.
Well, we won't know what he's going to, he or she's going to do. I mean, that's, okay, I got my answer, that's all I needed. This publishing, which I appreciate, filed with the clerk and published, doesn't mean he has to inform the council, though. We have to go and check where it would be published, and we have to check with the city clerk, is that correct, on executive orders? There's no requirement to actually inform the council of executive orders?
I think the expectation was informing the city clerk, we were informing the council.
So the clerk, there's someone here that requires the clerk to inform the council? Because the clerk can be fired by the mayor now. See, I'm worried about checks and balances. I know everybody thinks I'm crazy, but that's what, that's who I am. I taught government for 18 years, I worry about checks and balances.
We had, we had assumed in that that the change they made made it clear that these were a public record, and they would immediately distribute it to all parties, and had included the city council.
Is there a section in here under the clerk that says those things that are...
No, there isn't, unfortunately, but generally, the clerk would distribute those executive, just like they are today. By the way, today, they're all distributed also.
Okay, all right. Okay. Page 25, section 242. I think this is probably the crux of the matter for me, under section B, where it says that the council will no longer have any administrative control over any of the various functions of city government. So what I want to ask is, is that when they call my office, and they want me to take care of the street cleaning, or they want me to take care of the trees that weren't pruned, do I refer them to the mayor's office after this goes into effect? Because if I have no administrative control at all, when, and if I'm in the personnel committee and I want information from the director of the, the, the general manager of personnel about something, I can no longer direct him by, by my council motion to bring me information. Do I have to call the mayor's office and say, "Will you direct the personnel GM to give me the information?"
There is nothing at all in the unified charter that would prevent the council or council member from doing what you described, and in fact, the language here is largely adapted from the existing charter, so it's not in any sense, and I think this is very strongly held by both commissions, that this is not intended to, to create the outcome that the council member is describing. You would have, there's no prohibition against that in this unified charter.
Well, what does it mean, then, that the council, and I will read it to you, shall have no administrative control over the various functions of the city government? What does that sentence mean?
It means, indeed, it's the same, largely the same language as in the current charter. It's simply a statement that this is not an effective administrative...
But under the current charter, we have some effect on what happens to general managers, and under the current charter, we have lots of things that are being removed here. So when you remove them, and in that context, you have this line, you are, it's not the same as in the current charter.
Yeah.
So tell me, tell me what this prohibition, practically speaking, will mean?
In some sense, what 242B does, especially as further discussions between the two commissions, is actually strengthen the oversight role of the council by adding the phrase, so as to oversee all the functions of the city government. I think historically, the origin of the statement of not being an administrator, having that administrative role, probably has more to say that this is a council, mayor, city, not a council manager, city, in effect. It's a very older sort of issue, but it's the clear intent here, that the oversight function be greatly strengthened and written into...
I need to interject, there's no, in no fashion, does this increase the council's oversight of the city. I mean, don't, I mean, that's just not...
All right.
All right, I'm going to call on Mr. Savornich.
All right, I got a couple more in this serious problem.
Mr. President, before you begin my time, is it my understanding that now we are into general debate in regards to the entire charter package? Are we still on specific provisions?
I think we're going on the whole thing.
So we're still on 100 and 200? We haven't passed that as of yet? Okay. If we are not into general debate in regards to the entire package, Mr. President, I'd be happy to yield my time to my colleague if she still has questions on sections 100 and 200, because my comments are still in regards to the entire package that I would like to discuss.
Well, I'm going to call on Mr. Hernandez next, because he's, wants to be heard. Ms. Goldberg is, give her a little time to have a, have a bite to eat.
Is Mr. Deaton around? Maybe Mr. Comrie can help me. And, and, you know, again, I want to make myself clear also, the reason I'm asking a lot of these questions is, I also plan to vote for the unified proposal. However, I honestly am not sure if I will be supporting it in the election. And I'm asking questions because I need to know what position I want to take on this document, because there are a lot of things that are bothersome to me. And I think I have an obligation to my constituents to make sure they understand what I believe is in this regard. Now, when we deal with the Department of Finance that's being created, nobody has really explained to me why it's important. And my concern is that you have the mayor with more control over this budget process, and don't get me wrong, I've had a chance to work for two mayors. One, I didn't have a problem with this budget process, the other one, I have a major problem with this budget processes. And from my concern, from my perspective, part of this budget is the collection of the revenues. And the fact that in certain areas, we're collecting revenues, in other areas, we're not, we're entitled to collect them. So you have a office of budget under the direction of the mayor, you have basically the city clerk out of the picture, you have the treasurer out of the picture, and you create this whole new office of finance. And I'm trying to figure out how that works and why it's being created. So I'd like from the CAO's office and the CLA's office, a perspective of how that works, but then I need from the commissioners to explain to me why you created it. And if it's one of those where the mayor insisted on it, I need to know if it was something that came out of academia, I need to know, if it's something that came out of community.
The government finance...
Well, I was going to ask them to explain to me how it'll work, and then you can answer...
There was a, there was a continuing major push on the collection of city revenues, and there was recommendations made by the treasurer and other people, and there'd been a lot of discussion that we could perhaps collect more revenues. This ended up with a targeted department, which is really the tax collection function of the city clerk now, to do just that. It doesn't conflict with any other departments, it removes the revenue collection function, just creates a specific department for it. Now, there were a lot of recommendations that came in, and a variety of ideas on a department of finance. It would also provide duties in the future could be added to that department by the mayor and council through ordinance.
Mr. Hernandez, I think that this, basically, the Department of Finance is the tax collection portion of the city clerk and the treasurer, and I think the only significant difference is that historically, the administration of the business tax has either been done by a person protected by civil service or under the protection of the general manager being selected and fired by both the mayor and the council. This changes that relationship, but as far as it's a, the Department of Finance is the tax collector and the treasurer.
Okay, Mr. Burn... Okay, go ahead, George Erwin.
The only thing I wanted to add was, a study was commissioned by the Government Finance Office Association to make recommendations with regard to the financial aspects of the city. It made the recommendation of coalescing some of those separate functions into an office. And in fact, the Reining Commission, 25 years ago, made a similar proposal, and so the creation of the Office of Finance was based both on this new study that had been done, as well as the earlier recommendation, was thought that would enhance efficiency.
Okay, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, let me first say that there's much in this, these, this charter that I do not agree with. There's a number of things I felt that could have been addressed that weren't, but as one of my colleagues indicated, I intend to vote to put it on the ballot exactly as it's presented, and let the people decide. My time will be spent, and I think all of us... Yes, let me first say that there's much in this, these, this charter that I do not agree with. There's a number of things I felt that could have been addressed that weren't, but as one of my colleagues indicated, I intend to vote to put it on the ballot exactly as it's presented, and let the people decide. My time will be spent, and I think all of us should really be spent, not so much in opposition or support, but rather interpretation of what this charter will mean if it's enacted. The transfer of power to a mayor, such as they have in other cities of the United States, such as New York and Chicago, and I think that that's our duty. And not our, our duty, I believe, in spite of the things that we disagree with, Jackie, and I very much agree with you on that one point that you made, but I'm not going to, I'm gonna vote to put it on the ballot the way you presented it to us. My job, at what the time, will be to let my constituents know exactly what it means, and I think that's all of our, that's what our role should be.
All right, Ms. Goldberg.
Actually, from the questions that have been asked since I spoke, I'm now to the three hundred series, so I'll wait.
Okay, moving, moving right along. Mr. Holden, press your button and look at your time.
You're waiting to speak, oh, no, I'm speaking. As President members, I hear my colleagues talk about what's wrong, they see that's incompatible with, with good law. What they see that's being proposed in this charter reform proposal is incompatible with good law that would accomplish the goals they set for themselves, and that is accountability in government, et cetera, et cetera. They've been able to define what the flaws are in many instances, and what the consequences of adopting the charter change in some of these cases, what it would be. Now, to point these things out earlier is fine, but when you say you're not gonna amend the charter, or make a recommendation to the elected and appointed charter commission to say, "These changes ought to be made because you're in the trenches, and you are, we are in the trenches, and we know what the problems are, we can foresee what the problems are," but instead, put it on the ballot as you are, as the commission are recommending it, then proceed to kill it. That's, you know, I don't know how that's gonna weigh, when you publicly are saying that. Then on the other side of the coin, I guess you have some concern, or somewhat reluctant, to make a recommendation to each of the commissions, because they feel that they have worked long and hard, and whatever they have done is right, even though we not, we know is not totally right. And it isn't, because you're reinventing the wheel, and you're forgetting to put a little spokes in it. The spokes is what hold the wheels up, and you don't have a fender, we're gonna become the fender, we're gonna catch it when the wheels start turning, those are those who are elected at that time, because of the flaws that inherent in the proposal that's before us. We have a problem. The problem is that if we want to come to some agreement about what's good for the city and work out those flaws now, we're on a timeline, which means you really can't rush it. But if all parties concerned, the both commissions, and the council, mayor, et cetera, would just sit down and do it the right way, then hold those hearings on the problem areas, have an open discussion of fairness, and not make it be just political, "Oh, we made an agreement because one party said this, another party said that, so we compromised." That's not what your mission is. To compromise what's truth and what's false, and then give it to voters to vote on. You've said that over and over again. We have compromised because there's an argument on one side, an argument on the other side, and so therefore the commission has agreed to the compromise. You didn't say the compromise was a good compromise, you didn't say it was the right thing to do for the city of Los Angeles, you said we compromised. Then should, are you gonna say to the voters, "Hey, this is a compromise package, not that it's the best that we could provide for you to vote on." I mean, this thing can be ripped apart when the arguments are put in place against what's wrong, with what's before us, and there are those who intend to do that. I choose not to have that happen. When you refuse to listen, then I have no other choice.
Mr. Holden, would you look at your time?
You gave me thirty seconds over, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, alright, moving right along. Remember, I'm just gonna say that we're gonna go on until about two o'clock, then we'll continue this until Tuesday. Okay.
Page thirteen, section three forty-two. Currently, general fund monies can be transferred from the reserve fund upon a recommendation to CAO and approved by the mayor and a majority of the vote of the council, or a majority of the vote of the council subject to a mayor veto or override of that veto. What three forty-two under the unified charter provides is that for transfers not in excess of an amount established by, by ordinance, and on the approval of the mayor, provided that the mayor gives proper notice to the council president, the controller, and et cetera, that the mayor can in fact make the transfers of funds within appropriated funds. Three forty-three gives the mayor the same authority, currently given to the city administrative office, but again, subject to an ordinance passed by the mayor and the council.
Ah, we could establish the amount by ordinance?
Right, anything...
So we could say, you know, any twenty-five dollars, anything over a buck, twenty-five dollars?
Or twenty-five cents.
Well, twenty-five dollars, round it up. Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard on this?
I'm in three hundred series.
Okay, okay.
Well, we're finished with three hundred, so I think three hundred and four hundred at this stage would be appropriate for questions.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg.
The first one is on pages forty-four and forty-five. I didn't write the section number down, so let me get to it. On forty-four, under three twelve, and forty-five, under three thirteen, you give us from April twentieth for the budget until June the first. I think those are probably the current dates, aren't they? My question is, is that while you're expanding the role of the mayor, wouldn't it have been wise to have a check that would expand the amount of time the council has to look at the budget? In other words, I guess the question is, is that if you're looking at this thing as checks and balances, and you're expanding one role, if you had given us beginning from March the twentieth, you might actually have some real input by the council. Right now, and everybody will tell you, including the Chair of Budget and Finance, we really basically don't have any input on the budget. The timeline is so short that what we do is, we hear every department in lickety-split fashion, over hours and hours of testimony, we change the deck chairs on the Titanic, and basically, we don't really do anything. So I wonder if you discussed this, if you thought about giving us more time, and the same thing would be true on the confirmation of appointees. You know, we have so little time that it's actually a meaningless gesture to say that we confirm them, because we don't know anything about them by the time we have to confirm them, or they go into effect anyway. And it seems to me, if you're going to enhance the mayor's ability to appoint and to run everything, then it would have been nice to build in better timelines for the council to have a meaningful role, where we have a role left at all. And I wonder why you didn't do that.
We looked at that with respect to the budget issue, and our preference early on was to increase that timeframe for the budget review.
What happened?
A strong preference. We were informed of a few things that we weren't aware of initially. First of all, that the departmental requests are sent, that, upon which the, the mayor makes his or her budget, are sent to the council at the same time as they go to the, to the mayor. So there was a sense that there was, that we were unaware of originally, information being shared along the way, and at the other end of the process, there was...
Excuse me, could I ask the Budget and Finance Committee members to look at me for a second? Did you get the requests that go to the mayor on the departmental requests? You've got them? Have you ever gotten them? Who gets them? Who gets them? Have you ever gotten them? I've never gotten them.
The, the budget requests to the departments?
Yeah.
The city administrative office.
I see. So the council doesn't get them? The CAO's office may get them, but we don't get them.
That, you can request anything from the CAO, of course, so it seemed, this is what we were, we...
No, 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 it doesn't work that way in practical reality. In practical reality, it has to be someone has directed that we get them, or we don't get them, because everybody is doing a lot of things in our offices. I mean, that's the truth.
I would, well, I think the council would have to determine whether it wanted to direct the CAO as a matter of policy to give the CAO, that material to you. All I can tell you is that duplicates, what...
But you started by saying we're already getting them, and we're not.
If I could just read the existing language...
Yeah.
...in the charter, that these materials shall be submitted to the mayor with duplicates to the city council and the city administrative officer.
Well, we've been violating the charter for quite a number of years, because I've never seen one. In fact, I've never seen anything until the document comes out from the mayor of what the budget is. And then we start getting sort of backdoor requests, because people are right now under the current system afraid to talk to the council about what they want for their departments, unless they be fired, and so now, of course, you've strengthened the ability of the mayor to fire them. We're never gonna know what the departments think they need. How are you gonna fix that? Did you leave in that provision that'll go to the, okay, so, so, so we will require, then, that they send them to us this year, right, Mr. Alatorre? We will require that council members will get the copy of all the requests from all of the departments.
All right, Ms. Walters. Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the budget issue, it's already too late to request that, because the departments begin in December, I believe, giving their requests to the mayor's office. And there is a real reluctance under this mayor for departments to share anything, they, they're muzzled. So I just, you know, it's one thing to, and I really appreciate the work that all of you've put in on it, I've said before that I think you did stellar jobs, but I think that there's a real disconnect between what is written and what actually is, how it's, how things really move and function, and that is a real concern. One of these you were talking about was to give the mayor more control over finances, such as New York or Chicago. I testified before both your commissions that I think the beauty of Los Angeles is in that we're not governed like New York or Chicago, and we don't want to be governed like New York or Chicago. New York and Chicago are patronage systems. This is not a patronage system, but we, it's going to be, we're headed in that direction with moving the general managers out of civil service, and now moving the assistant general managers out of civil service. We really are headed toward patronage. I'm looking at, on this synopsis page, page twelve, section three hundred, that's on page forty-one of the, the Blue Book, where it talks about the Director of Finance develops and implements city revenue policy, collects, policy, collects revenues and issues licenses, permits, and tax registration, and recommends to the mayor and council improvements concerning revenue collection functions. This replaces the section of the charter that named the city clerk as the ex officio tax collector. What role do you see for the city clerk now?
City clerk retains almost all of the functions that the current, that the clerk has now. We thought this particular function, though, and following in part a recommendation by the, the Government Finance Officers Association, was an area where we could focus attention on revenue collection, meet some of the criticisms that maybe we were not collecting the revenues we should be collecting, and, and focus a department on that in the treasurer's office. So it was not meant to pull apart the city clerk's office.
Well, if you, it was just on function on revenue, why did you then remove the licensing, permitting, and tax registration certificates being issued?
Because they are related to the same thing of revenue collection.
All right, and what is the function now, under your suggested charter, of the city clerk?
Maybe we could turn to the clerk's, page, page thirty, is it thirty-eight?
Yes, section two eighty-one.
Two, well, it's a different, yeah, two eighty-one. Sets forth the powers and duties of the clerk, which relate to custodian of various seals, ordnance, contract records, and so forth, the keeping of all ordinance, contract records, and documents properly indexed, the attendance at meetings, the administration of oaths, the superintendent elections as provided in the charter. Those are record-keeping and functions that have historically been done by the city clerk.
And you've charged the city clerk in this with keeping track of all the bonds. Did you remove that from the treasurer's duties?
Actually, yeah, go ahead.
Currently, it is under the CAO's office, and given that we're conceiving the CAO as an information and administrative support office, it would seem that the keeping of the bonds is more in accord with the duties of the city clerk.
Mr. CAO, how do you feel about that?
These are just surety bonds, and it's a record-keeping function that's appropriate in the city clerk.
Council member, one comment you had asked about the budget, I just want to point out on three eleven, it reads, "At the time the mayor prescribes, but not later than January one of each year, is when the budget, each board or officer at the head of any department or office or other city government activity, other than those departments having control of their own funds, shall submit to the mayor with copies to the council and to the Director of Research and Administrative Service."
Well, it's never happened.
Right.
Not since I've been here.
Mr. Wex.
I also want to raise, respond to something, or not respond, but give another perspective of something Ms. Goldberg raised, because, and it's interesting, because it's coming from someone with a different perspective. I happen to believe that the mayor should have more authority than he or she has now in hiring or firing general managers. That said, for, for many other circumstances other than the one Ms. Goldberg mentioned. The one she mentioned, I feel that the policy of telling general managers not to speak about the budget is abhorrent, and I think it can be dealt with and should be dealt with in two ways. First of all, I think this council should bring every general manager here in public, and, and have a full public discussion on the budget. Better yet, if and when this new charter passes, and the neighborhood councils have a greater role in having input at an earlier stage in the budget, which is clearly one of the things that neighborhood councils should have, it is going to be provided, I assure you, that department staff, including general managers, provide to neighborhood councils very early upfront the budget information that is being kept quiet now, because those are, those are important issues. If a department person has to come to you privately and say, you know, "I've been told not to say anything, but if, here's what's going to happen," and it's, you think that's something awful, well, the time to resolve that is right upfront at the early stages in the process. And I think that those issues are the kind of issues that need more public input, more public discussion, more public debate, and I doubt if any council member would vote to hold, to fire a, a department head for, for speaking what he or she knows to be the facts. I think that while I do believe that the mayor does need more authority in that area, the compromise that we've reached seems to be the one that people feel is an appropriate compromise, the, the other issue that Ms. Goldberg raises, it is, it is absolutely, I, I can't even begin to understand how anyone could justify telling department people they cannot talk to council members, or the public, or anyone else, the press, or anyone else, about the budget. That, in fact, it is their duty to speak out. And hopefully, we will build into this process through the involving of the neighborhood councils in the budget formulation process, at a much earlier stage than any of us are now involved, and even here on the council, a, a method of dealing with that and having all of that information public. So I think that there's more than one way to, to skin a cat on that issue, and that the one doesn't necessarily have to lead to the other, as, as she raised, because I, I really, I just was amazed when I, when I heard that. I just, I don't know, it's just how you can have a government where people can't just shut up about their job.
Thank you, Mr. Wex. Ms. Goldberg.
Well, it's a good, good entry, because that's exactly the problem. The problem right now is it's very difficult for us to get information. Imagine the neighborhood councils trying to get it. Well, it may be written in, but it's written in, we're supposed to get documents that I just found out about, that we've never gotten since I've been here, and probably you've never gotten since you've been here, which is a, a day or two longer than I've been here. I was gonna say something else, but I thought better of it. Okay, so, a couple of other questions, and I'm actually pretty close to the end here, believe it or not. Thank you, all colleagues, for your indulgence. Page fifty-one, which is item number three seventy, says, "Every contract must be approved by the city attorney," this is at the end of the large paragraph, "as to form, except for contracts or classes of contracts involving consideration reasonably valued at less than an amount set by ordinance." What does that mean?
There may be a policy, as a policy matter, the city attorney would have the ability to tell you that there are classes of contracts... to tell you that there are classes of contracts...
Give me an example.
Well, this language actually came from the city attorney's office, so, but Mary, do you want, do you have an example?
Anybody, give me an example.
The existing charter allows the council to accept certain types of contracts, like personal services contracts entered into by proprietary departments, from the requirement that they be approved as to form by the city attorney if they're less than a certain amount. There's two or three specific classes of contracts that are named in the charter, and all this sentence does is just make it more general, instead of going through the different kinds of contracts, and leaves flexibility by ordinance for the council to decide if there are types of contracts under a certain amount that no longer, that would not need approval as to form by the city attorney.
Okay. Then, bottom of actually 49, top of 50, the section 344, the section on transfer of funds, says in the middle of the paragraph, harbor revenue fund, library fund, rec and park fund, blah, 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 and other funds provided by the charter and ordinance. Did you mean or ordinance, or did you mean and ordinance? Has to be both in the charter and in ordinance?
I'm sorry, would you give the section number again, councilman?
344, page 50, middle of the paragraph, after the listing of harbor revenue fund, library fund, because it says, "And other funds provided by the charter and ordinance." Did you mean or, or did you mean and? I think you meant or.
I think so, too.
Okay, I think that should be corrected, because there is obviously a big difference. Page 53, under contracts, I think most of the things were asked by Mrs. Walters, but just on number eight, under exceptions, it says that contracts with other agencies, even though contracts and implementing agreements were not entered in through a competitive bid process, so they're released from competitive bid if it's with a government agency, is that right? This is number eight, under E, bottom of page 80, 53.
Just answer that, and then we're going to move on. We have other people, won't be heard.
I only asked two questions.
I know, but we have a due to have a...
I'll just push my button.
You can press your button again, but...
Thank you.
Let her, answer the question for Ms. Goldberg.
My understanding is that this is a recommendation to allow, it was called piggybacking, and it came directly to us from the CAO's office, and Mr. Comrie may want to speak to this, because it was someone from his staff who'd urged us to adopt this.
It's also existing, it's also existing charter provision.
Yeah. I believe that it's the piggyback approach where somebody else has a contract, another big agency like the state or the county, it would still be the intent that they'd gone through a competitive process, but this was, I believe, part of reforms you did a couple of years ago that allowed you more flexibility.
And it is in the existing charter.
Mr. Deaton?
Yes, it's, it was included in the charter amendments that were made two years ago on all the purchasing areas. It allows us to take advantage of LA County or the state of California. We're looking at both of them, quite frankly, now on telephone service.
Before I call on Mr. Hernandez, I want to point out that I should have done this Wednesday, but Ron Curry, our Sergeant of Arms, has completed 29 years in the police department, and we want to congratulate. None of the 29 years will be appropriate, Ron. Mr. Hernandez.
And I don't, the reason why I've been focusing on this finance department, currently, in reading the provisions here, the city clerk is considered the superintendent of And one of our realities in dealing with economic development has been, for example, business improvement districts, and the assessment of those districts and the elections that are conducted now, specifically with 218 and so forth. We're running into situations where we have created programs or incentive programs of tax credits and these other kinds of things. Now, my understanding is the Department of Finance would have the responsibility to collect, the assessment, wherever it may be. Would the city clerk have the responsibility of notification of the potential election? See, part of what happens is we use the increments of revenue that's not being collected currently, because people aren't reporting their business taxes, to offset the cost of implementing those districts, and to provide incentives and credits for the creation of those districts. And so, as I read the unified proposal, it's asking for the city clerk to conduct the election, and I would assume the notification processes and so forth, but then the Department of Finance would be collecting the assessments, is that correct? And so, the Department of Finance would have nothing to do with the creation of an assessment district.
That's, that's, that's correct. It would have nothing to do with that.
And would have nothing to do with the incentives and the credits that are created as part of the program. All right. Just wanted to have that clarification for my thought process. The second area I have concerns, and this is a little bit more, in the area of reapportionment, we create this commission that's advisory, that has these appointees that do all this work in regards to the city council reapportionment process. Could you explain to me what happens to the school district, and what happens to LA Unified Community College District in that process? Is it just, again, separated completely from that process? Do they also serve an advisory role? And my understanding is that they don't serve an advisory role in regards to their process, but if you could provide some clarity there.
Yes, with regard to redistricting of the school district, it is also an advisory commission that is advisory to the city council.
So they don't appoint or anything, they just...
No, that's correct. It's a, it's a commission which is set up along slightly different lines in terms of appointment, but its function is exactly the same, to advise the city council. The commission members in section 802 are appointed, one each by a member, by each member of the Board of Education, four by the council president, four by the mayor. There are certain specific restrictions. One of the council president's appointees and one of the mayor's appointees must reside within the LA Unified School District, but outside the limits of the city, because there's a significant constituency that falls into that. No officer or employee of the school district shall be eligible to serve on the commission. It is, however, in terms of function, an advisory commission to the city council, which continues to make the decision on redistricting.
Do both works? Will they do work on the school district reapportionment? Because they do the work on the city council reapportionment, that's why they have a budget of half a million.
It's two different, I'm sorry, am I misunderstanding that it's...
Can we have some tech quiet, please?
It is two different commissions, each with a separate function, to advise the city council. There is no commission advising in relationship to the community college board. That is, that is not a part of the charter.
All right, Ms. Sikowski.
With regard to some of the issues that have been raised about the current charter that allows the department heads to give us as of January 1st their budget requests, as well as their requests for, where they would look to increase their budget requests over the last year, since that is now part of the record and always has been, I agree with members of the charter that it's not been a normal practice that that occurs across the board, but I do know that individual departments have, from time to time, provided that information to individual council members where their request has been made. But I would like to request that we get a copy of all of that material now in place from each of the departments, and that we look at this year's budget as well as next, both of which will take place before any new charter would be adopted, so that we can begin that process that members of the council have asked, that they want to be participating in. So if I could ask both the CAO and the CLA to create that duplicate request of each department and the budget to each council office as soon as possible, so we can begin that process. Thank you.
Mr. Fuer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anything in the unified charter that precludes the council, if it chose to do so by ordinance, from requesting any information from any department in the city?
I think the answer is there's nothing that would preclude that if you requested it.
So, because this is a very important issue, and you've heard a lot of questioners...
In fact, you're required to become, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, you've heard a lot of people say, express legitimate concern that we be apprised in a timely way of key issues, and the point is, isn't it that we preserve that option, the charter reserves us that option, to say, "We're going to direct that information to be provided by law, and no matter what other officials say, it must happen unless there is a veto which we could override," correct?
That's correct, and in fact, councilman, under section 242 in the Conduct of Business, it's your duty to be informed completely in order to oversee the business of the government.
Thank you.
Ms. Galanter.
Am I on? I just had one, I have lots of questions. I just have one for right now. Back on the ordinances that have to be re-adopted, I think you discussed this while I was out in my district, but what I want somebody to clarify for me is, we've adopted a whole lot of ordinances here in this council, including, for example, the surplus property funds, where we created one in each district. Do those all have, are they all nullified by charter section, I think it's 609?
I think there are two issues. One is, and Mary, strobe, correct me, one is whether they're inconsistent with new provisions with these, with this charter, and I don't, those will be a limited number that are set forth, I think. And secondly, there are going to be provisions of this charter that may be removed that requires you to adopt as an ordinance rather than a charter provision, that same provision.
Right, but for example, this one, thank you, section 385, it says, "Except as otherwise provided by law, the proceeds of the sale should be paid into the city treasury and placed in the fund of the department having control of the property." But we actually have on today, an ordinance on the books that says that half of the money goes into, each thing goes into a special fund in each council district for use in that district, so that the sale of surplus property in council district, whatever, benefits comes back to benefit that district, half of it does, and the other half goes to the general fund. So my question is, would that issue have to come before the council all over again? And if the answer is, well, whatever the answer is, from what you just said a minute ago, it sounds to me as if somebody's going to have to do a survey of every ordinance on the books of the city in order to find out what's consistent or inconsistent with the new charter, and I would ask the CAO what that's going to cost.
Mary, may...
I was going to answer the specific question, and I'll leave the latter question to the CAO. If you look at section 385 in the last...
Yes, that's what I just read.
I'm sorry. It says, "Except as otherwise provided by law..."
Right.
"...the proceeds of the sales are paid into the city treasury." So where there is law ordinance, as you described for the surplus property fund...
That would stay.
...then it would stay, and it would not need to be done.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, there will need to be a review of ordinances in the Administrative and Municipal Code to make sure they're in accord with the charter, but I'll leave the other question to the CAO.
Yeah, no, that's not your question.
Your question?
I guess the question is, how much would it cost, and how long would it take?
The city, if you're asking how long it's going to take our legal people to rewrite everything, they've estimated at least a year and at least $400,000.
That's, no, no, that's, that's part of the question, though what I'm asking is, somebody's going to have to go through and find in all our codes that we've already got on the books. What is consistent with the new charter, and what, first you have to ferret out what has to be rewritten, and I was wondering how long that was going to take.
Their estimate, to rewrite the charter and the administrative code sections, now I don't know if they went as far as to say they were going to check all ordinances, and we'll have to ask them that in the process.
I bet you they didn't, but we should ask them that.
Right.
We're going to put you on the Blue Ribbon Committee, because you've got a Blue Ribbon Committee on...
Hey, yes, I got that from the PTA at Fairburn School.
Oh, good. Okay, Mr. Alatari.
Back to these, the never-ending reapportionment commission, could you tell me, you mean to tell me that they're going to have, that aside from the Citizens Commission on city council redistricting, we're going to have a Citizens Commission for the community colleges? And what are you going to have?
Just for the Board of Education, the community colleges.
For the Board of Education. So we're going to hire a staff to do that?
That is correct.
All right. So we're going to have a staff, we're going to have a staff to do the city council, we're going to have a staff to staff the commission, and then we're going to have a staff to staff the Board of Education. Is that correct? And it's all advisory?
That's correct.
Now, folks, I mean, you just, I mean, do you realize how much money that's going to cost? I mean, do you have any idea what it costs to do, to hire a staff to do redistricting, if we're, if we're serious? Or maybe we're not going to be serious, and we're just going to hire, we're just going to have a thing, and whatever, and let them just sink or swim?
I think we have a CAO estimate on the costs, cost of that. But let me give a, an answer, councilman, on why...
Yeah, my life is, this is quadruple drooping, dipping, I mean, go on.
Why we thought it was an important...
Yeah, tell me why you think it's important.
Why we thought it was an important inclusion that was endorsed by both commissions. In our own public hearings around the city, there was widespread suspicion and concern and worry, different degrees of expression, about how districts are apportioned.
Yeah, go ahead.
What we, what the voters and people who spoke to us were telling us was that they were, they were under the impression that districts had been gerrymandered to meet the needs of individual members.
You know, folks, wait, wait, wait. I understand. No, I think, yeah, go on, finish.
What we learned was that that was not necessarily the case, but it was a, it was a widespread feeling by a great number of people. The elected commission proposed a redistricting commission, well, actually, the appointed commission looked at this issue and came up with the notion that, as with other cities, an advisory redistricting commission would both regenerate some additional public trust in the redistricting process, and provide the appropriate council decision-making authority ultimately on what those districts should be. So we thought, in our mind, the decision should rest with the council, but it should be a public process in which the public has some, some participation.
No, no way. You took all my time, let me just, I'll press it again.
I, I think what we need is Al Renati. I don't know, not many of you remember Al Renati, but he was a city clerk that did redistricting all by himself, and he was very effective. Ms. Goldberg.
I'd like to ask both commissions...